Good evening. I'd like to call the January 11, 2017 meeting of the Planning Board to order. First item is roll call vote. Roll call, excuse me. Roll call. I do that every time.
Member Camiso present.
Member Callahan present.
Member Barry present.
Member me present. All right, I'm gonna take a few things out of order. First item is, I think the board members have had an opportunity to review the minutes of the November 9 and December 14, 2016 meeting. Any comments that entertain a motion to accept individually?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so the motions were made, second to accept the November 9, 2016 meetings as submitted. I'm gonna do them separately. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the same for our December 14 minutes for 2016? The second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
First item is continued public hearing for 31 to 39 Newbury Street. Site plan special permit, planning board case 2016-11. We're in receipt of a letter. On behalf of the applicant, I respectfully request the public hearing scheduled for this date, January 11, 2017 be continued until February 2017. The applicant has a scheduled meeting on January 18, 2017 with the Planning Department and Mass DEP to discuss the environmental remediation of the property. We expect to be in a position to move forward after the meeting with Mass DEP. For the motion to accept and to continue the public hearing on 31 Newbury to February 8, 2017. Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna go to one of the other items that's on our agenda. It's a public hearing for 139, 129, 131, Sumner Street. Site plan special permit, planning board case 2016-17. And we had, due to an error in the advertising, all we're gonna do with this is open the public hearing and continue it to February 8, 2017. I don't know if anybody's here on that item, okay? But I do know that the counselor has the intention of having a neighborhood meeting. But all we're gonna do, because there's a flaw in the advertising, all we're doing is opening it and continuing it to the February 8 meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until February 8, 2017. Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. I should probably, you know, in fairness to everybody, I'll read the legal ad. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 11, 2017, on or after 7:00 PM, in the first floor Boards and Commissions Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, Quincy, Mass, on the application of Town River Realty Trust, Elizabeth Brown trustee, 462 Plain Street, Marshfield, Mass, 02050, for site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1. Site plan review. The applicant proposes the construction of three new two-story duplexes, six new units, in addition to a single-family house at 129 Sumner Street, for a total of seven multifamily residential development on a site, on an onsite garage parking with 27 unit, 27 unit multifamily residential development. Applicant also proposes landscaping drainage and other site modifications. Property contains 43,268 plus or minus square feet of land, and the combined lots are located at 129 Sumner Street and 131 Sumner Street. Subject properties are located within the Residence B zoning district and are shown in Assessors Plan 2052, Lot 2 and Lot 3. So that will be continued to our meeting on February 8. Counsel, would you like to? I just, what we've just done is continue.
Right. I, we understood that. It was just a, it was a breakdown in notification process.
Yeah, there was a.
I appreciate your accommodation. Neighbors, you know, have expressed and probably will continue to express their opinions as it pertains to the project, so I just wanna make sure that I'm able to notify and engage and have substantive conversations. So, thank you.
Well, we'll continue to, up to February 8, so.
Yep.
Thank you, counsel. Still waiting for our last board member. What else can we do? Can we do business stuff?
Design guidelines?
Yeah. 2016-74.
That one, we didn't have anything.
Okay.
So that's gonna show up on the February.
Okay.
So, through the packets, is design guidelines?
Yeah.
What is the second business item?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman and members, second business item on the agenda tonight is a review and approval of the final North Quincy Transit Oriented District Design Guidelines, updated November 2016. In your packet, I've included the approved ordinance that was adopted by the city council. I've also included, for your records, a copy of the consent order issued for the proposed redevelopment at the North Quincy Station. This is tied to the special legislation from the Acts of 1967 that brought the Mass Bay Transportation System back to Quincy after the passenger rail service had closed in the early 1950s. So, the copy of the approved ordinance, the consent orders, for your records, and you now have a final version of the design guidelines. Worked with our consultant, BSC Group, to clarify a little bit of the language. One of the highlights of the adopted ordinance is the city council elected to only approve the TOD overlay district for just the North Quincy Station. So those graphics have been updated into the design guidelines where it's just for the North Quincy Station. We do hope and do expect in the future that you're gonna see amendments to this that will incorporate Walston and most likely Quincy Adams, but at this time, the greatest development pressure is at North Quincy, so this is now on the books. So these are the design guidelines, I believe they were sent to you in the last packet. I'd be more than happy to entertain any additional comments this board may have, but I am satisfied with this product at this point. You know, so I think if the board votes to adopt that, then that, you know, that is what you do. This is the only board that adopts that. There's no financial elements that would require further city council approval. So I'm here to help answer any questions that you may have.
Well, members, questions? I know you've well seen it, but.
Doesn't work. Just the one microphone works.
Okay.
No question.
Yeah? Member Camiso.
Yes. Mr. Stevens, thank you for this. And can you just remind the board, you know, what are the next steps after this is approved? Because will there be a RFP process and what is that applied?
Okay. The third business item for tonight is a pre-filing meeting with a proposed development project at the North Quincy T Station. The T owns that land, the station land. Last year, they went and did an RFP for developments for that station site. There were three proposals that were submitted, and one proposal of Bezuto Atlantic Development was accepted by the MBTA. We, the Planning Department has met with that development team, starting, I believe, in August. And, you know, we walked the site and kinda got a sense of their proposal and what it would take, and we began plugging them into the city departments, Engineering Department, Traffic Department, and the like. We have activated Woodard and Current off the peer review engineer list in these early stages. The applicant has filed or will be required to file a MEAP application. That's a three-step process. That's a filing of an environmental notification form, which has been done. They got their certificate about a month ago. The follow-on to that is they are required now to file an environmental impact report. They're in the process of organizing that, and we expect that to, most likely, be submitted to the state for review, possibly the end of this month, but most likely February. And at that point, you know, we'll begin to, you know, contemplate bringing that application in here for review. So that is a, you know, that is, there's a chosen developer for the North Quincy T Station site. They had one public meeting, I believe that was back around Thanksgiving. One of the caveats that the city council did to the zoning ordinance was require public participation and public hearings. We have discussed with the applicant, doing a general informational or public meeting in the near future to sort of further that goal of the zoning ordinance. But, you know, I do expect a filing to be made under the zoning ordinance, which is similar to what we do in the downtown, where it's a certificate of consistency. So this document, you know, is to be, you know, in your right hand when you're reviewing the application with your left hand, to make sure that they're meeting the goals and intent of the guidelines as they develop their project. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board members? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to accept the design guidelines for Transit Oriented District.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Where are you?
Oh, good timing.
Sorry to be late.
That's all right. Just for the record, roll call.
Member Clint present.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the agenda. First item is a continued public hearing for 23 to 31 Bridge Street. Site plan special permit, planning board case 2016-12. Continued from our December 14, 2016 meeting. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Boston Property Development LLC. Tonight, I'm joined by Peter McLaughlin, who's the Principal of Boston Property, along with Chris Greenwood and John Hanson, Hanson's Boston Property, Rob DelSavio from M-Box Studios, who will make a presentation on the revisions that we've made to the architectural plans since the last meeting, and Jim Burke from DeSalle Burke Engineering, the site engineer, who will talk about how we, the changes that we've made to the design of this, the drainage design, which is significant in itself. As you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a continued hearing. We started this process in August of 2016. I think our first hearing before this board was in September, and this has been continued a number of times since then, and we've done quite a bit of work. I can say this development team has been fantastic in responding to the comments and concerns that have been raised by the departments, by the Planning Department, and by peer review engineers, and worked diligently with each of those agencies, as well as working closely with Mary Ann Peake, who I know is here from the National Park Service, who I know, number Barry raised concerns that be addressed, and has also reached out to the MBTA. So, just to, just to kind of reiterate, and then what I'm gonna do, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is then turn it over to Rob and Jim to talk about the revisions that we've made. But last time you were before this board, a number of concerns were raised by the, by the members. One being that the National Park Service's concerns that were expressed by Mary Ann Peake be addressed. Everybody expressed concern that the national historic treasure in the city be protected and that, and that there be no negative impact on that, on that treasure. And we agree wholeheartedly with that. In addition to that, the board also talked about, because of the close proximity of the site to the MBTA red line, that there were concerns raised to ensure that the MBTA was on board and comfortable that the development would not have a negative impact on the, on their operation of the line. And, and then other concerns that were raised by the neighbors regarding density and traffic and things of those nature. Because items at the time, at the September hearing and then later at the October hearing, were still outstanding relative to the comments from the Beals and Thomas, who's representative here tonight, and also regarding traffic. Who's on the peer review representative here as well tonight. Since that time, I can say to you that there have been diligent efforts, as I said at the beginning, with all of the departments to address all the comments and concerns that were raised. And we believe that we've gotten to a point, and I know that Mr. Stevens will present to you his findings, that we've addressed the comments and concerns of all of the department heads and all of the peer review consultants. But in addition to that, we, the team spent numerous meetings with Mary Ann Peake and the National Park Service to walk their site, to understand their, the concerns of the National Park Service. In fact, we went even further and, and reached out to the Hospital Hill Association and had a, and went to a meeting that was asked of us to attend at the, at the Hospital Hill Association, where it was again expressed by them that we also address and make, and ensure that the National Park Service is comfortable with the revisions to the plans. And I can say to you that as a result of those meetings, there were numerous changes to the plans that you'll see tonight. Even more than you'll see tonight, that Mary Ann Peake indicated in her letter to the, to the body this evening, and will be incorporated into the plans through our meeting with the Historic Commission, which we're meeting with on, on January 23rd. We've, we filed and we've, and will, and any decision that this body makes or the zoning board in that matter, who decided on this matter last night, will be subject to the ultimate recommendations of the Historic Commission, and, in which all of the Mary Ann Peakes and the National Park Service's concerns will be addressed. In addition to that, we've also reached out and had numerous, regular communication with the MBTA. The MBTA was provided the plans, there's been discussion with the MBTA. They requested and required that the applicant file for and apply for a permit before any construction take place. And we're confident that they are also comfortable with the issuance of that permit, that this will be, this, this development will not have a negative impact on the MBTA line and the operation, and they will be part of the construction process in that they'll have supervisory role in making sure that whatever's being done in the ultimate construction will not impact the red line. As we know, I'm sure many of, even some of our members here, utilize the red line on a regular basis and, and for transportation, and there can't be any impact on that. So, we're very confident and comfortable that we've gotten to a point that, that we can, that this matter can move forward to fruition. Last night, we appeared before the zoning board of appeals on our request for dimensional relief and reported to the board like we are tonight, and they voted to approve this project last night. We will appear before the Historic Commission, as I said, on January 23rd, and follow up with the National, the Affordable Housing Board as well to, to comply with the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Order in that respect. So without anything further from me, although I'm here to answer any questions and respond to any comments the board may have, I'd like to turn it over to Rob DelSavio from M-Box Studios, to kind of walk you through the architectural plans, and then Jim Burke to talk about the significant changes in the drainage. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I'm Rob DelSavio from M-Box Studio. Still orient everybody to the site. Circled and right here, it's Newport Avenue, Bridge Street, snakes down the hill here, back down to Hancock. And as you can see here, that's the MBTA rail lines that are cutting along that side of the site. Slightly in large view, you can see the proximity of the rail lines here are still about 30 feet back from the actual rail line itself, which will give us plenty of bumper construct, and then Bridge Street snakes its way down here. Another view here. So back in July, when we submitted the original drawings, we were basically a five-story building, and this is a view looking almost over the railroad tracks back towards the building. At that point, there's a lot of concern about the height of the building and its view, especially from the Park Service property. Now, next view. Since that time, when we were five stories, we've gone back and we've cut the building down lower on this side, so now we're only four stories here, bulk of the building stepping back to five, but once it steps back, almost 30 feet from the edge. So we've cut a lot of the mass of the building away from that side, from the most critical view of the building, and basically what's highlighted and read there is what's been removed. So this is the view of the building back from July, and we did a sort of a composition of the existing, the old building as seen from the Park Service site, realized that it was too big, and we tried to see what we could do to get rid of that top floor. And in the next view, we worked with the Park Service, we did some views back further from the historical buildings, and this is the section of building that we've got rid of here. So there is a piece that's still poking up, but it's pretty much shielded from the trees and it's been minimized quite a bit how much we're actually sitting above the tree line. And, parking wise, it's basically the way we had it back in July. We've eliminated half a level of subterranean parking and picked up a few of those parking spaces at grade level. Our parking count is onsite is 83 spaces for the 90 units, plus we have seven spaces across the street, so we're at a ratio of 1.5 spaces per, regarding. The upper floors of the building have basically remained, remained the same, we still have 60 units throughout the property. And then again, here you can see on the top floor, have we decorated about 3,000 square feet by cutting the building, the fifth floor of the building back significantly from that facade. This is the linear package as well, typical unit layouts, again, the units range from one bedrooms to two bedrooms. And again, a view of the top floor where most of the, all of mechanical, from up on the roof is all shielded by the power itself, so you won't see any of that from street level. And again, bulk of the building is kind of back far, pretty far back from your view from the National Park Service site. This is the view, this section through the building, and here again, the section that's gonna remove as you view it from the Park Service site. And this is a good view, because you can see even on this side, we've cut back a good chunk of the building, so you don't see that fifth floor sticking out, going from the grade street perspective. And then again, a piece that's been removed from, from the site. So Jim, can you take us through some of the civil engineering?
Good evening. Jim Burke with DeSalle Burke and Associates, and we are the surveyor and civil engineer of this particular project. We're looking at the existing conditions here with the multiple buildings, multifamily homes with access off Bridge Street, with multiple parking. This is the location of the proposed new parking of the seven spaces. This driveway here, garage here will be taken out and turned into a seven-place parking lot. This area is basically the major change of the project, this right here. The drainage originally proposed was in this location, we're gonna expand the, the system that was approved for 999 Hancock Street. Soils down here are, you know, I don't wanna say mired, but not as good as the soils up here. When we were building 999 Hancock Street, we got to observe the soil face along the side, and it was really a nice sandy gravel that is really susceptible to recharge from groundwater. So we sat down with the town, with the city, and they requested we store entire 25-year volume, six inches of rainfall, over 24 hours for this, for this roof. And it's considerable volume, that's about 50,000 gallons of storage right there. We have an overflow that, for the 100-inch hole event, that'll go into a level spreader, more or less, it's a 12-inch pipe perforated with perforations, one inch perforation, two feet on the center, which will, you know, mimic kind of a sheet flow, a lateral flow to prevent any sort of erosion kind of process like the heavy toes from this brick. Everything else pretty much remained the same regards to utility feeds. The drainage for this driveway here remains the same. There's a seven-space parking lot, and that's also the change in the layout. Everything else pretty much remained the same as far as sewer connection and water connection. We talked to the city about that as well, you know, the line and keep buildings that will service, provide, provide that, the new services there. So we'll be working with the engineering department as this, you know, moves forward. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Questions from board members?
Couple additional items, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify on the Historic Commission, although we're gonna be before them on January 23rd, we, we hoped to be before them before this hearing and sought to be on their December agenda. Unfortunately, because of scheduling, the board decided not to have a December meeting, and therefore, since they only meet once a month, we, we moved to the January hearing. We will however follow up. I know, as I indicated, Ms. Peake addressed and raised concerns about continued dialogue on the design elements of the building relative to colors and material selection. And a lot of those things aren't, haven't been decided upon, they've been discussed with, with the National Park Service, but they will be, that, that discussion will continue and it will be addressed in specific detail at the Historic Commission level, who is really, I think, whose jurisdiction is essentially colors and, and design elements of that nature, and I think that they'll, they'll have quite a bit input on that. The other thing I wanted to, to indicate about the parking elements, as well as we, as, as Rob DelSavio indicated, we have 1.5 spaces per unit, which is actually in accordance with Business C parking requirements. So we're consistent with the code, and we're, we're meeting that requirement through the use of the seven parking spaces across the street, which will be provided by way of a, of a, of a lease arrangement at the owner of that property, who's also a Boston property entity. The interesting thing in, in what I suggested in, to the department, is that that will be an ongoing lease arrangement depending on need. And it also is an opportunity to address other concerns about parking in the street by other users, i.e. interfaced social services, if that additional space is needed. And what it does provide clearly is clear visitor space. So when visitors do come to the facility, rather than needing to pull into the garage or even into the surface parking lot that's provided under the building, they'll have a clearly designated lot directly across the street that they'll be able to utilize. And when we raised that with the zoning board, they felt quite comfortable with that change and liked that change quite a bit, that it provided that clear designated space. Just to highlight the, the comments to the, to the drainage, I think it, what's lost in that a little bit is that the Conservation Commission also acted on the drainage when the drainage was gonna be handled through the expansion of the system on 999 Hancock, on 999 Hancock Street site, which is actually in close proximity to the Furnace Brook. And although the Conservation Commission was comfortable, we looked and to try to find other ways to address that on the, on the site that we're dealing with here today. So this redesign is really a significant change and improvement to the drainage elements. So with that, we, that's the applicant's presentation of the revisions. We're here to answer any questions.
Questions from board members? I have two. One, did, was there an order of conditions issued for this building by Concom?
There was.
Okay.
There was. And in fact, initially, it was, when, when the initial design phase, and actually because of the significant revisions, we'll, we'll seek and speak with Mr. Duka to determine whether or not any additional action is necessary. I think what we'll find is, is that this, since it's significantly less impact, there's probably no need to seek an amendment, although we will do so if necessary.
And my second question is, the number of units, is it still at 60?
It's still at 60.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna, it is a continued public hearing, so.
Can we be here?
Yeah, I'll pay with you, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So for the record, my name is Matt Cody, professional engineer with Beals and Thomas. We reviewed the project on behalf of the board back away from August, due to the significant review changes and design changes. We reviewed the project several times, we're very familiar with all the aspects and the iterations that have come to this point. As we issued a letter to the board just this week on Tuesday, essentially finalizing our review, at this point, we're comfortable.
So for the record, um, my name is Matt Cody. I'm a professional engineer with Gildan Thomas. Um, we reviewed the project on behalf of the board, um, back away from August, um, due to the significant review changes and design changes. Um, we reviewed the project several times. We're very familiar with, um, all the aspects and the iterations that have come to this point. Um, as we issued a letter to the board, um, just this week on Tuesday, um, essentially finalizing our review, um, at this point, we're comfortable with all the technical issues that have been raised, and we feel like they've been addressed adequately. Um, there are, however, a handful of items that still kind of remain outstanding that are kind of more administrative in nature, and that can be potentially handled if the board deems appropriate by, like, or, um, conditions of approval. Um, some of those include, um, this pending fire hydro testing that needs to be done in the area. And again, that'll all be coordinated through, um, the DPW. Um, submission of, um, file of landscape plans and other documents that we didn't necessarily receive, but we assume the board has, uh, such as like the butters lists and green building, um, documentation. There is a waiver before the board regarding the rear, the rear yard setback, um, that still remains outstanding. Um, their, the applicant is also proposing, um, more groundwater and soil testing as the project progresses. And again, that'll be something that'll be reviewed and documented during the building process. And there is also the resolution of this off-site parking. Um, it's been added, that has added some impervious area that necessarily hasn't been included, the stormwater, um, management. Um, we, we recognize that the, you know, impact is probably minimal. It's not a large area, but that hasn't been thoroughly addressed. And again, would, um, defer that to like the building process and those approvals. But, uh, like I said, in general, we're comfortable with the revisions that have been made. And, um, I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Questions from board?
With, with tonight is also Jeff Derrick from the N S Associates, who reviewed the, was part of your team regarding traffic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Derrick of the N S Associates were your review consultant relative to traffic. And I think similar to what Matt had said, um, all of our outstanding questions have been answered. Um, we have a letter that's dated December twelfth that should be in your packet. It does list some items that we would suggest would be conditions of approval to the project, mostly relating to the access into the property itself. Um, there was just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. And we looked at it from a traffic perspective, and I think what you've heard through the hearing process is, um, a couple of the concerns were related to on-street parking, and obviously the adequacy of the parking relating to the project itself. But as we look at those things, and you think about the off-site parking lot that's proposed, we think it's appropriate. But what you'll see is comments from city staff as well as there's an importance of having safe pedestrian accommodations in this area here. So what you've seen asked both through our review as well through city staff review is reconstruction of some of the wheelchair ramps in the area, making sure the sidewalks are accessible. And then if we look at the parking lot across the street, clearly we need a safe pedestrian connection so that that is functional as it relates to the project itself. So we've asked the applicant to, um, make sure that we have those appropriate accommodations. So that's all gonna kind of fit hand in hand with, as you look at conditions, making sure that we've got safe sidewalks and pedestrian accommodations as well. And then with respect to the on-street parking, I think that city staff has also requested, as have we in our letter, that a parking management plan needs to take place in this area. The applicant should commit to doing that. That parking management plan should not only be after the project constructed, but what's happened in this area, as you're probably well aware of, is with the construction activity, it's resulted in construction worker, worker parking on street in this area. So as this project gets constructed, we want to make sure that doesn't happen related to this development of parking. This is either be on the site, and then I think most importantly, the public transportation and car pool needs to be. So on behalf of answering any questions, this is Jeff. But again, in our central letter, um, it's outlining kind of some of the conditions that you might want to set. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, it is a public, continued public hearing, so I'd ask anyone who wishes to speak, just to come up and identify yourself. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'll speak if no one else will.
Great.
I'm John Rutherford, fourteen, Tresland Way. I just moved, I'm Ward Five now, originally from sixty-two Grand Law Road, also Ward Five, so I drive through that area, um, often. One thing about the traffic study, um, Thayer Street, cars park on one side of that, and when you come up Bridge Street, there's a do not enter, and you're forced to take a left onto Thayer Street. Thayer Street isn't wide enough for two-way traffic. So if this project is allowed to go through, it would only make sense to make Thayer Street a one-way, so it goes away from Bridge Street. You can't make it the other way, because cars wouldn't be able to, to leave the area. But that way, you're not gonna have people cutting through the neighborhood, going down Avon Street, taking that left, and then going down by the Fowler House and taking that other left. At least when they're leaving, they'll have the option of either going down Bridge Street, or they can then go out that way and go to Adams or go whatever. But everyone that comes to that apartment place is gonna have to go to Hancock. They're gonna, you know, deal with the traffic that everyone else in the city has to deal with, okay? And, you know, you're gonna have to fix that if you approve this. I think that according to the rules that have been coming to these meetings for over a year now, zoning approves this first. I wish there were some rules where they came to planning first, and planning had to approve something before zoning could approve something. But the way the city of Quincy works is if zoning approves something first, they approved it at sixty units. You can't even change that. So you either have to approve this at sixty units or, or not approve it and have them come back. Zoning kind of tied your hands. Chairman Akins wasn't even at the meeting, um, last night. There was another meeting at Central Middle School yesterday about the Fox Rock development, and they were talking about, you know, doing all this crazy stuff, and, um, a taxpayer stood up and she said that, you know, they don't say no to any projects, and they really don't. And this, if there's ever been a project to say no to, um, I'm for developing something there, lower, thirty units. Someone else wanted to build thirty units there, but, you know, it's your job to either stop this project, or it's your job to continue approving every single project that comes before you. They can come back with a better plan, which is better for the neighborhood, better for the taxpayers. And like I said, that Thayer Street, that parking issue, I challenge you right now to drive down there at any given time. Um, if two cars come at each other, there's, there's nothing you can do. It's gonna be a bad problem. So, um, I honestly am shocked that they're still asking for sixty units. I mean, what concessions did they actually make? Okay? I mean, we asked them to work with the planning board, work with the neighborhood, work with the Adams Historic Site, work with, you know, the people that left that site for the people of Quincy to enjoy. It's the views that they're taking away from us. Those people up there, they're gonna have the views down, and that's what's valuable. I mean, let, I mean, if this project does go through, you know, I might want to live on that top floor, you know? If the developer will let me, you know? But, I mean, the whole point is rents are very expensive right now in Quincy. I am, you know, I just moved to Quincy, I'm paying a lot of money for an apartment that I'm really not happy, you know? And it's, it's, we're driving the rents up, and we're, we're pushing people who grew up in the city away from the city, and you're basically building stuff for people that aren't from Quincy. You're building this for, for new yuppies or people from hipsters. I'm not sure who's gonna live in there, you know? Transit orientated people. I mean, basically, I am in the process right now, I'm gonna sell my Prius, because I have to sell my car to be able to afford to live in, in Quincy, and I'm gonna start driving on these bike lanes that you made, that I have no idea how they were planned out. I just, as I have no idea who planned out that parking lot at the central school, because parking was unbelievable last night. So say no. Stand up for the taxpayers. Stand up for the people of Quincy. Show that you are truly an independent board, and that you are not a rubber stamp for the developers and not a rubber stamp for the mayor. Because I have respect for the planning board, and I hope you will make the right decisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Jeff, I see.
Anybody else in the audience? Go ahead. Hello, my name is Jonathan Setney. I live on Monroe Road. I don't know this gentleman, but, um, you'd think I did because of what I, what I have here. I actually drove on these streets and took some photographs as I drove on them. But I want, I want to say initially, the developers of this project have really been wonderful. Uh, they did meet with the Hospital Home Neighborhood Association, I'm a member of that association. I know that they've met repeatedly with Mary Ann Peet to, to try to, um, ameliorate some of her concerns. My, my position on this is the project is just totally inappropriate for the area. Great developers, great project, it's totally inappropriate. There's not enough space. The roads are not appropriate for the area. We're building a project for people who don't live in Quincy, people who are simply going to, uh, begin to demand that there be improvements in the area where the project is being built, because they're gonna have it be made. We're gonna have to pay for those, the taxpayers of Quincy. We're paying increasing taxes, according to the mayor from what I've read in the page of the ledger, where our taxes are going up because the residential building is not apace with the commercial. It's way ahead of the commercial, so that pay, uh, compoes, it's a greater burden on us, it's for taxpayers. We're building for people who don't live in Quincy, who are building at a point in time where rentals are going down in terms of money, the rent rates. There was an article in the Globe this weekend, Boston rental rates going down. New York Times had an article, rents in New York are going down as well. We're building, and we're building, and we're building. I think Mary Ann Peet made the point last time. We're building these buildings, and they last. We're not just putting up a tent and inviting people to live there, and then if they don't next year, take it down. We're building these buildings and leaving them for the children of Quincy to look at for the rest of their lives. But moving on to the photographs, I only have three sets of these photographs, so I'm gonna give, I'll give one to Ed and, uh, get the colored photographs to the, to the board. So I'm driving in my car, I have a Nissan Altima, and I'm driving down Thayer Street. And the first photograph is a photograph of the street sign. And driving down Thayer Street, the second photograph, my car is in the road, there's no space for anyone else. The car in front of my car, the dark black one, is a car that's driving up Thayer as well. As this gentleman indicated, there are cars parked on the right side of Thayer. There's only space for one car to get up Thayer Street, as it is right now. You can see where Thayer is in relation to that project. You can see the condition of the road, you can see the cars parked there, and the, the cars presumably are from people in the neighborhood that park, people who work in that area. I don't know, but the, that area is packed. If you move to the next photograph, you can see my car, you can sort of see the dash in, in the bottom of the photo, approaching the intersection of Thayer with Bridge Street. And again, I am the only car, there's no space for another car to drive on Bridge Street. The next photograph is a photograph of, again, you can see that my dash at the bottom of that photograph, and right across from my car is a car that had to pull over on Bridge Street, because there was no space for that driver to make the turn on the Thayer Street, because I was in Thayer Street. So they had to pull over so that I would have room to turn right on Bridge Street, so that they then would be able to turn on the Thayer Street. The next photograph, I turned right on Bridge Street, you see this project that's just been built on the left-hand side, was at nine-nine-nine. Huge. Lots of people are gonna be moving in there. Lots of people who are gonna want to park. So I'm driving down Bridge Street. Now again, there's virtually no room for anyone else on Bridge Street except me. So I'm driving down Bridge. I turned around and drove up Bridge, and on the last photograph, you see the cars that are parked when I'm driving down Bridge, I first made that turn. You see the pickup truck on the right. When I turn around and come back, the last photograph are all the cars parked along Bridge Street. This, this is my mirror, side view mirror here. I'm driving back up Bridge Street. There's only one for me to drive up Bridge Street. All these other cars are parked, and they're parked on the sidewalk, or they're parked over the curb. I don't even know if there's a sidewalk there, it's too hard to tell. So where are these people gonna drive? Never mind park. How are all of these people from nine-nine-nine gonna gain access and park in the building? Presumably, they're gonna park in a parking lot under the building thing. And then these other people are gonna drive, and these other people are gonna park. I asked a question last time, and I never really got an answer. Are the people who rent in these buildings gonna have to pay extra to park? Maybe the parking's being provided, but do, on top of the rent they're gonna pay, do they have to pay extra to park? And I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that question, but we've had situations in Quincy where they've had to pay extra to park. They're not gonna park underground, they're not gonna park in the parking lots. These kids, because they are gonna be young people, they're doing their best to pay their rent, plus pay their student loans. They're gonna look for parking anywhere else, in neighborhoods, along Adam Street, in front of the National Park Service. So my point is that, I mean, I think that these photographs tell the story. When I originally heard about this project, I thought, oh, I know Bridge Street, I know that area. But you know what? I drove it. And I don't know if any of you had driven that in the last month and actually seen these conditions. And if you do, I don't see how anybody could possibly think that this project is an appropriate project for that location. It's, it's just, it's just inconceivable to me that that would be the situation. It's an increased burden on the taxpayers. We're gonna have to take care of this situation. All those people moving into these buildings are gonna be banging at the door of the city saying, take care of these roads, where are the sidewalks we're gonna walk on, and we're walking to the T. And who's gonna have to put that bill? Us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just wanted to point out, in this picture, this car's parked, but there's a sign that clearly states no parking anytime. So I think enforcement is gonna be a big part of all development.
Good evening, Marla Faris, Warrenmont City Councilor. Uh, while I appreciate that this applicant has been before you since, uh, August, I have been working on this project with this applicant from early summer, and previously an application before you, so we've been working on this project over a great year. Um, at this, uh, at this address, right, the commercial filing. Uh, we've had multiple meetings, and I want to thank you all for your work on this project, as well as Mr. Fatsies and Mr. Stevens, and the neighbors for taking the time to give their input, to make changes in this project, people that. Um, I think it's different classes you're hearing about what's allowed per business zoning, the highest density zoning district that we have in Quincy is a parcel of twenty-three third of Newport Street, and understanding what's allowed by writing, and how the residential uses are lesser in the actual neighborhood. If you have frustrations, you cannot get a parking spot on Thayer Street, it's ten minutes on a Tuesday. It's a problem that's in the neighborhood. By all means, anybody driving down there sees violation, six-one-seven, four-seven-nine, one-two-one-two, QPD twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, they're glad to come and respond, call them. It isn't helpful to us to hear it after the fact, and if you see the violation, call it in. Let's hope we have, you know, one of the resources that the police can afford. So it's definitely an effort of enforcement, something we hear them at, everything in there, but what this project is for the specific address, as you understand, what's before us. One thing I do want to give compliments to is this development team. They've worked on a lot of projects in my district every single time. They have come out with what a project is, they've followed through, met their guidelines, ended up quality projects, and quality work with local, um, local contractors, and I truly appreciate that, because we have not had the same with other cases. That was before you for Gilson Road and Johnson Ave. If you write, like, it's the worst blight in the city of Quincy that's still standing. So kudos to the development team for putting so much together, for their patience and understanding as you run through the neighborhood, um, concerns. So thank you for your time.
Alex Steffen, one-fifty-six Adams Street. So I got a chance to preview this as being a borough hospital, neighborhood association, and I was here last night as well with the zoning hearing. And I do also want to thank the development team for their open ears and modifications they made. The point I'd like to make tonight is that, um, this strikes me as a process that has been very pieced together, that I think you can look at a map here of this general area that runs over Furnace Brook, down Newport, uh, down Hancock Street, and takes in to where the Woodward School and the Historical Society are, and see an incredible opportunity for the city. As someone who lives within walking distance of the space, um, there's a tremendous opportunity here to have an integrated, um, commercial, residential, um, real cityscape with walkable, um, mix of things. My concern is that we will go one project at a time, and we will end up with a jumble of buildings with no cityscape at all. This building, while very attractive in its design overall, it will have an entire first floor dedicated to cars, as will, um, the projects around it. So right now, um, I'm concerned that we've seen three very high-end projects developed in a very small area right here. developed in a very small area right here. None of them appear to me, I mean, wrong, but none appear to me to be integrated together in any way. And I think that's reflected in the parking and the traffic concerns raised tonight. No one seems to have thought long-term about what to do about Bridge Street or Thayer Street or the intersection of these with Adams, Hancock, or Newport Avenue. The intersection with Bridge Street reaches Bridge or Adams reaches Newport is already a disastrous intersection. It is very busy. Potentially in the summer, there's a lot of pedestrians, and now we'll have more. It's not great, and it needs improvement, but that's all we're talking about. We're talking about one piece of the project. So it's probably not the exact form for this, but it seems like the right moment to raise to the right group, to the planning group thinking about developments in these areas, about how we can improve our integrated income of these kind of projects and maximize the interest that developers are starting to take in building projects here and have some talent for future thoughtful development. I think if you don't, I think we're gonna have the same concerns raised, the same problems raised, the same parking issues and the same traffic issues, and they've been worse and worse and worse. So with that said, I do thank you for your time. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, thank you for this opportunity to be before you again. It has been some time. And at the last meeting, a councilor, a former my friend, I've known it for several years and worked with us over Quincy. And, you know, he said sooner or later, we have to make a decision. And I thought, yes, it's easy to make a decision, but it's making the right decision. And it's having to consider the opportunities and options available for the long term so that it isn't something that's quick because a quick decision would be the preferred alternative to do nothing, to keep it as it is, or to look at the historical integrity. So knowing that there are regulations and rights within property zoning and what have you, how can we make this right for the community? What's the best thing to do? It's like having Cinderella's glass slipper. How does it fit, you know, in size? And how does it fit into this space where it is? And I think Alex Stefan brought up a good point about the fact that what is the big long-term picture? What else is gonna happen in that area? And how can we develop it as a whole? And how can we look at Freedom Park? And how it can integrate into a promenade that reaches out to Adams Green so people feel comfortable in their space in their community? The Adams National Historical Park could end up being an attractive nuisance. Somebody talked about safety, somebody talked about traffic. What do we do with sixty-plus people? Probably 120 people plus triple nine, more people, and they want to visit a park? We need to figure out how those people are going to get across the street and be safe because that's a hard one, let's face it. So the long term, what are we doing for transportation? What are we doing for zipcars? What are we doing for bike rentals available to the community? What are we doing about pets? You know, I'm actually thinking about, you know, if pets are allowed, we have sixty units, we might have sixty dogs or sixty pets to walk twice a day, which is 120... Listen, where are they gonna walk to? You know, is there a dog park? No, because there is a national park. And so how is that gonna impact the national park? So we need to be aware of those things, you know, as we introduce new life to a community of complexity. We all know about the traffic. I think everybody here is contributing to a greater whole. I think we want it to work. You know, we want to do the right thing. I worked with an organization that is remarkable with their patience, with willingness to work with us. How do we make it fit so it doesn't look temporary? That it looks like it belongs there? And I think Boston Properties is sensitive to that. We have come up with a list, working with the Hospital Hill Association, who have been very attentive, wanting to improve their community or working with groups. And so the list I'm leaving with you today is an indication of our concerns and what we would like to see part of this project. And the design is critical. It's a very beautiful building, but remember the glass slipper, you know. How is it fitting into the space? And there are ways, and Boston Properties is very sensitive to that as to how they can configure the architecture so that it blends with the historic across the street so that they are attractive, you know, and they look like they belong. So, you know, it has been quite an experience. I just feel that if it is to be, let it be the best it can be